Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the school committee. Before we begin, I'd like to provide some guidance regarding public comments and the process for addressing concerns. The school committee values the right of all citizens to express concerns regarding the committee, its members, the school program, or staff. To ensure that complaints receive proper attention, the school committee's policy directs that concerns first be addressed with the teacher or staff member involved if it's appropriate. If the matter is not resolved, the complaint may then be brought to the principal and then to the superintendent, who will report all such complaints and actions to the school committee. At our meetings, the public generally has two opportunities to speak, during the open forum and on specific agenda items. During the open forum, individuals may speak on any topic for up to three minutes. All remarks should be presented in a civil manner. While the committee may listen for informational purposes, we cannot engage in substantive discussion on topics that are not on the agenda. Matters may, however, be referred to the superintendent or considered for a future agenda. When speaking on a specific agenda item, please wait until the chair announces that item. Speakers must stand, state their name and address, and then speak only to that item announced. Individuals wishing to have a topic placed on future agendas may submit a written request to the superintendent. And just to close, some additional reminders, you're asked to sign up before the meeting to speak during open forum. If a large group wishes to address the same topic, we encourage consolidated remarks or the selection of a spokesperson. It's also appropriate for any member of the public to simply indicate agreement with the prior speaker. Comments regarding specific personnel or student privacy matters are not permitted in open session. We appreciate your cooperation in following these procedures, which help ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard in a respectful and orderly manner. Thank you. As we have no one signed up for open forum this evening, we will move over to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes from our meeting on September 23rd, both regular and executive session, and then we have homeschool requests. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda?
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a...
Oh, go ahead.
The minutes on the last meeting?
Sure.
On the second page, it says that you made a motion to grant Superintendent Haskins' approval to revise the Tiverton Middle School Policy Handbook.
That was the initial motion from my recollection, yes. And it failed.
Okay, so it just, the way it's worded, it looks like it went through.
Let me look at that.
Diane Farnworth made a motion to grant Superintendent Haskins' approval to revise the Tiverton Middle School Policy Handbook, addressing cellphone use, allowing for cellphone use on buses, with explicit guardrails and expectations, as well as consequences for activities such as cyberbullying.
Okay, let me get a quote.
Okay.
I see it, okay. Elaine Pavo seconded the motion. The vote taken was zero to four. The motion did not pass.
Okay. Then on the third page?
Sure.
Number eight, when we were in executive session, we came out, there was nothing here that says that we were updated on Council 94 negotiations?
Well, you're right, that's a miss. That was the... Well, no, actually, let's take a motion to seal. Yeah, you're right, there is no action there that was noted. So, Mrs. Mendez, if you could update the minutes to reflect that we did receive an update on Council 94 negotiations, as well as we had a discussion on the interim high school principal's contract.
Thank you.
Those will be amended, is that okay?
Yes. And then I did want to ask a question about the homeschooling numbers?
Sure.
Last meeting, we had nine, and then we had one. I was just wondering, how many of those are new students and how many of those are returning from last year? Okay. Okay, I noticed you added a column here about students returning to district. Could you just add one for, like, new students?
Sure.
That way I don't have to ask. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Unanimous, thank you. For chairperson's remarks this evening, I do want to share with everyone that the Tiverton Hall of Fame Committee will be hosting its annual dinner. I believe that's on November 14th, and I intended to write that down before I spoke. At McGovern's Restaurant, it's an annual event and well worth the price of admission. It's, you know, a good event for Tiverton, a lot of people go. And we do, we celebrate our athletes from recent to days long gone by. And it's a lot of fun, a lot of, a lot of great opportunity to just get in touch with people from town. So, I recommend it highly to everyone.
Do we know who the inductee is this year?
There are several, but the 1984 football team is the big highlight. They do induct usually several. Moving on to superintendent's update. Mr. Haskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the committee, members of the public. A few upcoming events for your calendars. The Health and Wellness Committee will meet on October 20th at 5:30. The School Culture and Student Retention Committee will meet on October 20th at 3:45 to 4:45. This is a new teacher-led initiative to try to help make Tiverton High School the most attractive option for Tiverton families. We know we have an excellent program, and we have a number of invested teachers who are interested in showcasing our programs to the community. So, that's a new committee for us. The Special Education Local Advisory Committee will meet on October 22nd at 6:00 p.m. The Ranger Elementary School will hold a Global Eats tasting with Chef Neil on October 24th. I neglected to mention the Picasset Elementary School had their Global Eats event. Now, this is an initiative of our Chartwell's vendor partner to try to promote global awareness of menus across our schools, and encourage students to purchase meals through our school system. The Building Committee will meet on October 28th at 5:00 p.m., and the Policy Committee will meet on October 28th at 6:00 p.m. Those are both before our October 28th 7:00 p.m. school committee meeting. On behalf of the Tiverton School District, I am delighted to extend my heartfelt congratulations to everyone at Picasset Elementary School for earning the prestigious Blue Ribbon Award. This recognition reflects the exceptional dedication, collaboration, and hard work of the staff, students, and community. Our Blue Ribbon Celebration was held on October 1st, and it was a memorable, memorable event that honored this remarkable achievement. We were proud to welcome Commissioner Infante Green, along with Representative Edwards, Senators De Palma and Philag, Town Administrator Jones, Town Council Members Di Maderos, Janik, and Perry, School Committee Chair Farnworth, School Committee Members Paquette and Sherman, and former Picasset and Fort Barton Principal Dr. Riddell. Grade four teachers were also able to attend, highlighting the vital role of classroom educators in student success. And the Picasset PTO provided invaluable support throughout the celebration. We should know that the Blue Ribbon Award is not an ordinary award. It's given to fewer than 1% of schools across the United States each year, and only 8% of schools nationally have earned this award since the program began. It demonstrates that our students don't just want to learn, they want to be the best they can be. And our teachers and support staff don't just want to teach, they want to be the best teachers they can be. And they've done it. Only three schools in the entire state of Rhode Island are in the Blue Ribbon Award this year. Picasset School is truly among the best. Throughout the week, the school continued its joyful recognition of this award, including a staff breakfast, a school-wide dance party, class and staff photos in their Blue Ribbon blue, and a lively performance by the Toe Jam Puppet Band. Great band, unfortunate name. These events captured the energy, creativity, and spirit of the Picasset community, reflecting the pride everyone feels in this accomplishment. Congratulations again to all the staff, students, families, and community supporters on this remarkable achievement. It's a reflection of the outstanding work that's happening every day in Picasset and across the town of Tiverton, and it's a joy to celebrate in their success.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And if I could just add to that, kudos to yourself, to Ms. Donnelly Roach, and to everyone who had a hand in putting together the event last week. I think it went off flawlessly. I think they, you know, everyone who was there thoroughly enjoyed it, especially the kids. They were excellent, they were well behaved, and they, they just took it all in. I just couldn't get enough of the smiling faces, so it's probably one of the best parts of being involved with the schools.
Thank you. And I neglected to thank my planning team, Assistant Superintendent Krager, Principal Donnelly Roach. We had to keep this very close to the pocket. In fact, we had to bill it as a ride spotlight ceremony. Those who read between the lines realized it was a Blue Ribbon event, but I sincerely want to thank our planning team. Madam Chair, I also want to recognize we have a new member of our administrative team with us this evening. We are very pleased to announce, to re-announce and introduce you this evening, Dr. Andrew Keough. Dr. Andrew Keough is serving as the interim principal of Tiverton High School. He was the unanimous top choice of our search community, committee consisting of department heads at the high school and our assistant principal Aruda, and I've invited him here this evening to share a few words. Thank you, Dr. Keough.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for that, that warm introduction. It's an honor to be here tonight at Tiverton High School. I have had a wonderful experience. It's been a grand total of 12 days, so I'm still learning every day. I go home exhausted, and my wife reminds me, "Well, you wanted to be back with the kids." And that is true. And so, it's, but it's been a great experience. I just have to tell you, as, as an outside observer, and I, I spent many years serving on the NEASC Commission and visited many schools, as well as those that I worked in. This is an outstanding place. And what, what really stands out to me is, is the love of the faculty for these young people. You can't miss it, because they will bend over backwards for the, the students. When we have a dance and we have 10 chaperones, that's pretty telling. When we have a game and you see faculty showing up without being, you know, pushed into it, that's very telling. That's the kind of school we have, and I think that that rubs off on the children. They see that the adults in their lives care about them, and it feels to me like a great fit, because I've spent my entire career putting kids at the center of everything that I do as a school leader. And the school is, that's what it's all about. So, I commend all of you for your efforts. I want to thank Mr. Haskins and Ms. Krager for their support, because I may have some experience, that is true. But anytime you come into a new system, it's the first few weeks that really tell you everything. And I've been supported all the way, and I really appreciate that, so thank you.
And thank you for joining us.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Keough.
Okay, also, Mr. Haskins?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to general business. Item A, review October enrollment report, Mr. Haskins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The October 2025 enrollment is the result of several hours of work. We are continuing the superintendent's cabinet to clean up our Aspen enrollment data. As I have expressed previously, there have been some errors in coding, making an Aspen report challenging to provide accurate information. Our process has been to compare the report that we provide daily to the Rhode Island Department of Education to the Aspen enrollment report, and we have gone student by student to make sure that we have an accurate report for you this evening. As requested, this report breaks out students by school location and has a subtotal for the total number of students being educated in the Tiverton School District. It also identifies by row, students who are either in a district outplacement, homeschooled, in a career and technical education program outside of Tiverton, attending charter schools. These three students attending private schools are private school students who receive services through the department, through our Department of Student Services, and we have six high school students identified as having alternative learning plans. So, we have a subtotal of 214 students outside of Tiverton School District, 1,421 students being educated in the Tiverton School District, pre-K to 22, for a total of 1,635 students. Additionally, as requested and as has been reported to you in previous years, there is a breakout of the number of students per classroom in grades K to 4. As you know, with the middle and high school schedule, class size changes depending on the course, so the K to 4 class sizes are here for you. If you look at the left column and the second to left column, those are the grade levels and the number of students at the Picasset School. To the right of that is the Ranger School, and then the fourth grade Rising Tigers Program at the Tiverton Middle School. Additionally, you've been provided the September enrollment report that is similar, but a little bit different, because it does not have the subtotals.
You mean the, the classroom breakouts?
Neither the subtotals or the classroom breakouts, that's correct.
Somebody updated the September report.
Oh, I see that, yeah.
Which was good.
Yes. So, in September, there were 1,416 students educated in Tiverton. For October, there are 1,421 students.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions, comments?
I just have a quick question. Kindergarten, are there two kindergartens in each of the two elementary schools?
There are two kindergarten classrooms at Picasset, and there are three kindergarten classroom, classrooms at Ranger School.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's the superintendent cabinet?
That consists of myself, Assistant Superintendent Krager, Director of Finance, Andrade, and Director of Technology, Dan Andrade.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, and Assistant to the Superintendent, Christianini. Oh, excuse me, and Director of Facilities, Mike Mendez.
So, he's doing, right? I mean, numbers for classrooms?
No, actually, our, our superintendent's cabinet consists of two major parts. The first part is facilities discussion, our Director of Facilities is included, and then he exits, and the rest of the superintendent's cabinet gets to the other business, the academic program and the operational program.
Okay. So, there's no attached Aspen information with that? Is that still not ready?
That's correct. As we go month to month to reconcile the Rhode Island Department of Education report and the Aspen report, we are making changes to the coding of students in Aspen. We expect that over the next few months, as we get to greater detail, we'll have an Aspen report that's available. But our priority for the committee was, was to provide you accurate data, so it'll, it'll be a few more months before we're able to provide that in an Aspen report. There are some challenges with that. One is that a student can be coded in a number of ways, depending on the placement of that student. So, a student might have a homeschool in Tiverton but might be in out-of-district placement, would show up on two lists, gives us an inaccurate number. So, we're still working out those details.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Haskins.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to general business B, accept fuel oil bid, and back to you again, Mr. Haskins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the background on this is that Casey's Oil has served the communities of Tiverton and Little Compton responsibly for many years. Casey's Oil submitted the lowest bid for both fixed and variable pricing options. Sunshine Oil also submitted a bid. They have provided satisfactory service in recent years. The solicitation process was fully managed by the Tiverton Public Schools, with all responsibilities for coordination, documentation, and review completed accordingly. The participating parties jointly shared the cost of the bid advertisement. Director Andrade recommends that the school committee award the heating oil contract to Casey's Oil for the period of October 20th, 2025 through October 19th, 2026, at a fixed price of $2.75 per gallon, contingent upon concurrence from the town of Tiverton, the town of Little Compton, and the Little Compton School Department. The vendor submissions were attached for your reference, and we're happy to answer any questions.
So, before we begin discussions, may I have a motion to accept the fuel oil bid from Casey's Oil in the amount of $2.75 for fixed, $0.38 for variable, and that would be going through October 20th of 2025 through October 19th, 2026?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions?
I just had a question where it says concurrence with town of Tiverton, town of Little Compton, and Little Compton School Department. What is...
I believe it's a consortium.
That's correct.
That we lead. And, and Mr. Andrade, if he were here this evening, I'm sure would tell us all about it, but that's essentially what it is. We, you know, and purchasing in a group can be advantageous, of course.
Okay. And then I was wondering, I didn't notice Picasset and Fort Barton. Are we going out to bid for them?
Do they use fuel oil in those buildings? Natural gas.
Oh, it's natural gas.
Do they use fuel oil?
So, will we be going out to bid for that, for natural gas?
That's a separate process. I don't know.
Okay.
I know we have renewed some energy contracts, I just don't know where we are with national gas.
I don't think that they do.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
That's it? All right, okay. Um, I... Thank you. The, the backup is, is very clear and acceptable, so I have no further questions. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, so all in favor of the bid? It's accepted unanimously, thank you. Okay, next up, we have accept USDA Fresh Fruit and Vegetables Program Grant. Mr. Haskins, this is your show tonight.
I guess so. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to inform you that the Tiverton Public Schools has been awarded the USDA Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant for Picasset and Ranger Elementary Schools from October 2025 to September 2026. The grant total is $31,500 and will provide students with increased access to fresh fruits and vegetables throughout the day. This is the first time that Tiverton has been awarded the FFVP grant despite multiple prior applications over the years. The achievement reflects our district's ongoing commitment to improving student nutrition and fostering healthy habits, and we thank our vendor Chartwell's for their support of this grant. It is a federal grant program managed through the USDA. It is designed exclusively for elementary schools, and its goal is to expose children to a variety of fresh produce and promote healthier food choices that support their growth and academic performance. For example, an elementary school student might receive strawberries one day, peaches another, and fresh beets another. While every food offered to them may not be the most appealing to the student, the goal is to allow them to experience foods they might not otherwise try. And the, the, the program has had great success in expanding the palates and interests of students. Keep in mind, these are fresh foods, and they are delivered multiple times a week, not every day, but several times a week. Please note that the Tiverton Middle School is not eligible for participation, even though the fourth and fifth grade students are considered elementary. The FFVP is strictly limited to self-contained elementary schools under federal program guidelines. So, it is the administration's recommendation that the Tiverton School Committee formally accept the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Award in the amount of $31,500 for Picasset and Ranger Elementary Schools, as administered by the Rhode Island Department of Education and Chartwell's.
Thank you, Mr. Haskins. Do I have a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $31,500 for the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Grant?
Motion to accept the grant.
Second. Thank you. Is there any discussion, or are there any questions?
I'm just curious, maybe you can't answer this, but if fourth grade was in the elementary school, would that be considered, they'd be part of the elementary school?
Yes.
Or fourth and fifth grade, if they were... Okay, so it just goes by the name, the type of the school?
The building itself.
Okay. And then these, this is not going to be in addition to lunch or breakfast, right? This is something totally separate?
This is in addition to lunch and breakfast, and yes, it is totally separate.
So, it would be like a snack?
It would be in addition to any snack that they're already enjoying in the classroom. It would not replace the snack.
So, to dovetail on Kim's question, it would be, any student would be available, have this available to them, even if they don't get hot lunch?
This is correct. It's available to 100% of students in the school.
Okay, thank you.
And it's optional. Students may choose to eat or not. Of course, they're encouraged to, as with any food, they're encouraged to, but we don't require them to eat it.
I know you're not giving them candy.
Please.
Thank you. I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Brendan Andrade for preparing this and submitting it. Jocelyn and I are on the Wellness Committee, and we sent this to him, and before he sent us back saying, "I'm on it," he sent it back saying, "It's been submitted." So, we are grateful, and I don't think we've properly thanked him.
Well, we will publicly thank him then. Thank you, Mr. Andrade, as you enjoy your time away from us this evening.
Yeah, I second that. I feel like I'm always sending him stuff, and he's already working on it half the time, so, much appreciated.
Good news. Thank you. I, I guess I only have one other question, and it just came up when you mentioned strawberries. Obviously, the, the, the school administrators and nurses are aware of children's allergies and know to keep certain types of fruits and vegetables away from certain children.
Yes, Madam Chair. Our school nurses are very much aware and communicate very closely with our classroom teachers about food allergies. For example, the, the foods, there are some foods that students are allergic to. A student might be allergic to lemon juice. If lemon juice is used as a preservative for fruit, we will know that ahead of time.
Very good. Anyone else have questions? No? Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Okay. Next up, we're going to give Mr. Haskins a break for a moment. Item D, approve indoor track team request. Mr. Gouvea, you're up.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, we, we see an opportunity to add an indoor track team this winter to the sports that we offer. Presently, we only offer boys and girls basketball, and we have a few other individuals that participate in co-ops and with other teams as individuals. We have one gymnast, one wrestler, you know, one female hockey player, I think four male hockey players this year. So, we see a good opportunity. A lot of interest in, in track. Last spring, we had a real surge in numbers, and there's a, a high interest for the indoor track as well. We had only three athletes participating in, in indoor track last winter. They would go to Portsmouth, and mostly all the teams in the state practice outside, so we were, those kids were going to Portsmouth to run outside when they could certainly have done that here. But now, with, we're looking at maybe a dozen to two dozen possible candidates, so we think it's a good time to try to add that program. Minimal cost. It's $1,400 for the two teams to be registered, one coach in stipend, and we already have the uniforms, so... Any questions?
Before we entertain any questions?
Yep.
Could I get a motion to approve the institution of an indoor track and field team, winter track and field team for Tiverton High School? track and field team, winter track and field team for Tiverton High School?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I think to your point of three indoor athletes last season, I think that's the limit that the Interscholastic League allows, right?
Yes, so if we go over that.
Right, so by offering it here, we open up the opportunity to so many students that maybe wanted to and couldn't because we were already at the max.
Right, yes.
Love it.
Yep, we want to add, yeah, as much as we can.
So, question for you, and this is a financial question. I know you've put in here that it's resulting in a net zero fiscal impact, but what does come to mind is transportation to the meets.
Great question. So most of the, just about all of the teams, they do not take buses. A lot of it, because the meets start at 5:30 and can run four or five hours with all the different events. What happens a lot is the parents bring them, and then when the individual is done with their event, they go home. So we do have our mini bus, if need be, you know, to transport as well. So I think transportation-wise, there's not much of a cost there as well.
Okay. And I know in the past, when we approve a new sport, we have to make it clear that it cannot add cost to our current year's operations. In order for it to proceed next year, it would have to be built into the budget in order for it to continue. But great way to start for year one, in my view. My last question, I know you said they're running outside. Are there other indoor events that they would want to use the gym for? I'm not familiar...
Yeah, we would, and in bad weather as well. In the fitness center, we would use, but the shot put, you know, comes to mind, yeah.
In the gym?
On mats. We throw it on mats.
Yeah, we'd have to, there's a special put that, you know...
That floor is not going to like divots.
No, they're soft, indoor shot puts. But, yeah, and we'd have to work out the, you know, sharing the gym space, but I don't see that as a problem.
Okay, well, you're in charge of it, so...
We'll make it work.
All right. Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Haskins, break's over. Review state assessment results.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With apologies for sending you a 100-page report, I included both the Rhode Island Department of Education's report and a breakdown of scores across Tiverton and the state of Rhode Island. My report to you this evening will provide a high-level review of the 2024-25 state assessment results for the Tiverton School District, and we will prepare a more school-specific report for you for the October 28th meeting. But this will be a high-level report. These data reveal a mixed performance and notable strengths in grade 10 PSAT scores and a significant challenge in grade 11 SAT math, and a detailed comparison against state averages in peer districts. So some key takeaways from the analysis. Tiverton demonstrated mixed RICAS performance for grades 3 through 8. Tiverton's English Language Arts scores improved by 1.5%, lagging the state's 2.9% gain. The math scores overall declined by 0.9%, while the state average improved by 1.3%. Just for context, anything smaller than 6% really isn't statistically significant. We're looking for changes of greater than 6% for any type of significance. Tiverton's overall proficiency rates in English Language Arts and Math remain significantly above the Rhode Island State averages. The performance varied at the school level, with Ranger showing strong gains and Pecasset experiencing sharp declines. Tiverton demonstrated significant PSAT strength in grade 10. ELA scores rising 3.1% and math scores increasing by 7.2%. This performance is particularly noteworthy as the state average for ELA declined by 3.9%. Tiverton's PSAT scores now exceed the state average in ELA and have substantially closed the gap in math. In contrast to the PSAT, Tiverton's SAT performance was a point of concern. ELA scores saw minimal growth, less than a percent, far below the state's improvement of 3.8%. The SAT math scores dropped by 7.7%, moving from above the state average in 2024 to below it in 2025. Keep in mind that it is... We are unable to compare scores because it's a different cohort of students. So it can tell relative school performance, but it's a different cohort taking the SAT, so there is real no comparison. The NGSA is the Next Generation Science Assessment. The district's overall science score has improved by 1.3%, while state averages saw slight decline. We saw strong growth in grade 8, 7.1% increase, and 11, 4.2%, with an offset of a decline in grade 5 at 6.7%. The Dynamic Learning Maps is an alternative assessment given to the 1% of most significantly disabled students. These numbers of students taking the assessment are really too small to draw any comparisons. There were 14 students who took the assessment in the previous school year, and Assistant Superintendent Crager, was it four students? Six students took, were eligible to take the assessment in 2025, only four of them taking the assessment. So a very big difference in the number of students taking that assessment. And for the state report, Rhode Island is identified itself as recognized as a leader nationally and internationally in reducing chronic absenteeism from 24.7% in 2024 to 22.1% in school year 2025. The State Department of Education identified that students are still struggling with mental health and that there are lingering effects of the pandemic. However, Rhode Island now ranks 14th in mathematics recovery and 13th in reading recovery, according to the Education Recovery Scorecard. Some state-level takeaways is that for English Language Arts performance, there was a slight increase from 30.8% in 2024 to 33.7% in 2025 in grades 3 through 8. At the high school, 51.6% of students met or exceeded expectations, higher than pre-pandemic levels of 2019. In mathematics, 30.1% of students met or exceeded expectations in 2024 and 31.4% in 2025 for grades 3 through 8. And for the SAT, there was a slight increase from 21.7% in FY '24 to 23.3% in FY '25. And that's the state-level report. As I said, we will give a more school-specific report for you at the next meeting. We will include the percentages of students meeting or exceeding expectations in a three-year comparison, as well as importantly, the growth scores. Students in grades 4 through 8 are attributed a growth score, comparing their growth from one year to the next as compared to academic peers. Those are peers who took the assessment who are in a band of performance with the students in our district. The growth score is really an important measure for us to review. So we'll have the growth scores, the comparison over three years by grade level and by school for the RICAS and for the NGSA for the October 28th meeting.
Will you also be looking at the PSATs and SAT?
Yes.
Similarly?
We won't have, yes, we won't have growth scores, but we'll be able to report out some specifics, such as the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in subcategory for students in special education versus not special education, a really important metric for us to look at. Students identified by race, ethnicity, and economically disadvantaged, not economically disadvantaged, for the PSAT 10 and the SAT. We can also compare that to our neighboring districts, so see where we fall within comparable districts.
Thank you. I'll just kick things off. As you said early on, these results are very much mixed. I wouldn't call them great. But with that said, I know you mentioned you're going to do a three-year comparison with at least the primary drivers here. Is it possible to do a five-year comparison so that we can truly measure trends?
Certainly.
To me, the more data you have, the better, and I think five years is fair. You know, if you see, if you see a line going up and down, you understand that there are differences in children. If you see a line going consistently up or consistently down, that can be the sign of a change that may, you may want to address, and I hope we can. So that's what I have for commentary. Anyone else?
I do. To draw your attention to the Dynamic Learning Maps ELA district number, it says here, 2025, that the score was 16.7%. And that's the same percent that was on the DLM district math, same exact percent. When I went into Ride, because I checked all these numbers in Ride, because I like doing these things, you've got down 16.7%, but Ride has downed that there was no score because there were less than 10 kids. Do you get the scores that they don't publish to the public?
So there are two sites available. One is to the public, the other are to educators with a password. LEA leaders, meaning Assistant Superintendent Crager and I, have that district-wide access. You're referring to 2025 DLM district math at 16.7%? Is that correct?
Math and ELA are the same exact percent. They're both 16.7%.
Are you questioning whether that's accurate?
I was just wondering where that came from, because like I said, when I went onto the Ride website, it was less than 10 kids, so they couldn't give you a score.
Yeah, Ms. McHatt, just double-check that, because that is true for the science score for the students who took the DLM science, because it was such a low number. But the 16.7 was correct for math and ELA, so it just might be that science one that you're recalling.
Okay, am I next?
Because there is a different number for the science, because they only take that in grades 5 and 8 and 11.
Okay. Students that are outplaced special ed, when they take the DLM, is that, does that go with their school that they're at physically, or does that grade come back to Tiverton?
It comes back to Tiverton.
So that's included, okay. Because I'm concerned, it says here that there was a minus 30.4% drop in special education ELA scores. And when I went and checked, the number was actually listed incorrectly. So it ends up being 40.4, not 30.4. And that's a lot.
So it went from 57.1 to 16.7, and I agree, that sounds like a lot, so I just want to just explain that a little bit. State and federal reporting guidelines, including ESSA and Ride's accountability system, they actually flag subgroups that are less than 10 as statistically unstable and should be interpreted with caution. So only, we had 14 last year take that assessment and only six this year. So that's, when you think about that, last year, each student was only, was 7.1% of the overall score. This year, each student was 16.7. So that is a significant change in the number of students that are used to get that overall score. So really, although we reported it, it should be taken with caution. Of the 14 students who took it last year, only four of the students who took it last year took it this year, 24 to 25. So of the 14 students, 10 of them did not take it, four of them did.
And why is that? Why didn't they take it?
Because they know, they did not fall in the range of the grade levels, or students moved out of state, or they no longer were eligible for alternate assessment. That is something that we do each year at the IEP meeting.
I'm going to check that number and get back to you, because I... Yeah, dude, I was horrified when I saw that.
Well, I think also you have to... So just take that with caution. Did I explain that, so you understand it a little bit better? We really shouldn't report under 10. But there's nothing to hide. It's just, you know, how the numbers reflect based on the number of students that took that, Kim.
Because they were consistently in the 50s. Like back in 2017 to 2018, they were 53.3.
Yeah, so it's really interesting you bring that up. There was a recent change to the percent of students who could take the alternate assessment. It went from 2.5% to a 1% rule. So students who used to be eligible for alternate assessment, a high number of them, are no longer eligible for that assessment. So we're really only assessing this 1% of the population that the DLM was created for. So the other students are taking the RICAS.
And that started this year?
Two years ago, three years ago. It really started three years ago, and the state watches that. We, they, we are accountable to the state for that, so they've been watching it for three years, and we have not been flagged as a district who's over identifying kids for that.
Because I asked you in a previous meeting, you said they were starting that this year, the RICAS and all assessments switching.
No, that's been in the, that's been since three years.
Well, that's strange.
Yep.
Yeah, because this, this just doesn't look good.
I hope I explained it to you so you understand it a little bit better.
Anyone else have any comments, questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, last on the agenda, we have an update on the town capital requests, and I was not able to send you guys any backup because the meeting was just last night, and I wanted to have a placeholder on the agenda to bring you up to speed. So the town council met last night, and they, among many other things, discussed the casino gaming allocations. I will tell you that they had just under $5.5 million available to distribute, and they chose to distribute three and a half, say, $3.6 million rounding. The school department had put in a request that we had voted on a few weeks ago for $1,550,000. Of that request, $421,000 was approved, which is 27% of our request. To say I'm disappointed is an understatement. In 2015, our town voted to make significant bond investments to replace the roofs and heating systems, both here and at Tiverton Middle School. And those bonds are not going to be paid off until 2038. Additionally, at that time, the school committee voted to use some of their fund balance to add on to that project, and that's why we have the new ceilings and updated lighting systems in both schools. In essence, these are, you know, conscious decisions that were made by town and school leaders at that time, and as well as the voters, of course, to approve the bonds. And what that means is that, you know, we intend to keep these buildings and use them for the foreseeable future. Since the opening of the casino in 2018 and the subsequent influx of more than $3 million annually, both the schools and the town have benefited from investments in capital improvements. And that includes, obviously, the remodeling of most of our bathrooms at the high school and middle school, the brand-new locker room facility that our students now enjoy. Most recently, we've done a lot of security enhancements in all of our schools. We've also been able to... Um, we've also been able to spend on some athletics field improvements, lights, scorebo- scoreboards, et cetera, as well as a- a number of smaller dollar projects for just general school upkeep. Um, on the- the municipal side, you know, the fire department has been able to update their fire trucks and equipment. We now are the proud owners of a ladder truck here in town where we never had one before. Um, we have some new ambulances. Um, our fire equipment has been largely updated as well as, um, some of the building, uh, the facility updates for- for our fire stations. Our town farm, our recreation space has been updated, thanks to, uh, in no small part to these funds. Um, additionally, you have some, you know, they've- they've spent some money on DPW equipment. I- I did note specifically a brand-new street sweeper. Yay, our streets are clean. And, you know, I- I think anybody who pays attention, you know, knows that every year, there's, you know, discussion of making sure that we have up-to-date police vehicles especially, and- and I know a lot of that is offset with grants. Um, you know, in- in many cases, you know, from the list that I just read to you, and- and there's more, obviously, um, a lot of these investments were long overdue. Um, and we're all fortunate to have access to this funding stream to bring our towns and our schools up to snuff, if you will. My concern here, however, is that at this year's meeting, the town chose to deny the school department's request for three items: to finish the rest of the restrooms at the high school and middle school, to replace the tennis courts at the high school that we can all agree are in fairly rough shape, and to address the soundproofing issues in the high school auditorium. While I understand that the priorities need to be made and that I don't begrudge any town department from updating their buildings and equipment, I don't understand why the town has chosen to hold $1.9 million of funds that have already been received. I ask the town to reconsider this decision not to fund the high school tennis courts in particular. Our student athletes deserve a playing surface that is smooth and well-built. I also ask that the town consider developing more of a long-term plan for capital improvements instead of this annual quote-unquote Hunger Games-like event. This is exactly the type of thing that could be part of ongoing discussions involving school and town leaders as well as community representatives, AKA the townwide finance committee that I have proposed on a few occasions to the town council. And again, I'm speaking for myself here. I realize I'm sitting at this table, but this is entirely my own perspective. From my perspective as a member of the school committee, I understand that there will be no new schools going up anytime soon in Tiverton. However, we need to be consistently investing in our e- existing infrastructure so that we can offer the 21st-century educational experience every child in this town deserves. Please remember also that much of our spending on our schools is eligible for partial state reimbursement. In addition to ongoing maintenance for our aging facilities, we need to continue updating the learning and athletic spaces in order to keep kids here in Tiverton. If we don't, we'll eventually lose them all. Is that really what any of us wants? It's all I have to say on the- on the issue, but you are up to date. We have been approved for a number of the items on our request list, uh, and that total that was approved was $420,708. Does anyone have any questions for me?
What did you say the percentage was approximately?
Um, it was 27% of our request.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Perry? If you could introduce yourself, then.
You don't know who I am?
We do, but our people in TV land.
Dave Perry, 78 Brambleway. I'm not here as a town counselor. I did attend that meeting last night.
You were there at the- at the table as a town counselor.
Now, I don't know if you realize, but you people have received 65% of the casino money so far that's been taken in. So your 27% yesterday was a small portion, but you've been receiving 65% of the total. You were also told last night by the council to come back in the springtime once you get your reimbursements, and we will look at this again, because we want to do those. So make sure that everybody knows the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, um, that takes us to the end of our agenda. For our future meetings, again, we have our meetings on October 28th. We have the Building Committee, we have Policy Subcommittee, as well as a regular school committee meeting. And then we meet once again on November 12th. At this time, I will, would like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 4246582, negotiations update for Council 94, and Rhode Island General Law 4246582, litigation discussion. Do I have that motion?
Motion to enter executive session.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Paquette?
I'll second.
And your vote?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
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 Okay, we are in executive session. Thank you.